Before it crashes again. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, October 25, 2022, here in Coachella. And let me start with some introductory remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD's Coachella office and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda, and if that doesn't work on our website, cbwd.org, just go where it says "meeting agendas." The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on an item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person, via Zoom, or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. We do have one board member attending remotely today, so I'll make sure that we call on them and have plenty of opportunity for remote input, and all of our votes will be by roll call. That covers that, I think. And so, would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
End of roll call, so.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
And Vice President Estrada will be absent today. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here, here, here.
Thank you.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of, and I don't see anybody raising their hands to correct me, so I think we're okay.
Are we going to drop one item from the closed session?
Yes, we will drop actually several items. We had listed all of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association versus Coachella Valley Water District, and we will hold off on those discussions until November. There's been...
So that's D through, 13D through 13...
And as in November.
And, yeah.
And we will also drop one of the 13As, anticipated litigation as well, correct?
Okay. So 13A is gone, and then...
One of the three cases on 13A is gone.
Okay.
Okay, just one.
So we should be out of here by 8:30.
So there's two cases on 13A instead of three. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Yes, sir, one.
Ah, I don't remember him.
Good morning, and thank you very much for allowing me to come up. My name is Ed Luna. I live in Mecca, California. And at a past meeting, I kind of like mentioned the possibility of the Coachella Valley Water District and the Imperial Irrigation District's termination of contract and not knowing which way the board had even considered, if even the conversation has come up in a regular district meeting. But there are other meetings going on regarding the topic. One of them, a commission known as the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, meets regularly on the second Thursday of each month, and it's very helpful for the community to keep up with what is going on, if you will, during these last 10 years of the contract before it expires. And as a community member and resident and ratepayer, user of the Coachella Valley Water District services and the Imperial Irrigation District, I've seen the benefit long-term, you know, the immediate benefits and long-term benefits of the existing contract and the possible extension of an agreement with the Imperial Irrigation District. And you can stop me anytime you think I'm out of line if it's not the right time to talk about this, but I think it is because there's a lot of things going on, if you will, during these conversations with the Coachella Valley Energy Commission. And one of those things going on is the consideration of forming special little districts or assessment fees, let's just say, that could tag on with either the continuance of the Coachella Valley Water District's agreement with the IID or without it. And so, that's one of my major concerns because, and I really, I really, if you will, I'm attached to both districts because I've been a lifetime user and beneficiary of the services. And one of the things that I pride myself on, and I like to share with other people who ask about our Coachella Valley, is that our districts, our service providers, power and energy, and even to some degree, the gas company, those utility companies work as part of our economic structure. And in our own, if you will, mission statement, the Coachella Valley Water District is formed to meet the water-related needs of the people, to dedicated employees, providing high-quality water at a reasonable cost. I really believe that. I really believe that. It's proven itself historically, and I think that there's no reason why it can't continue based on the leadership, the team that you've got working with you, staff, employees out in the field. I've been one. I've worked for the Coachella Valley Water District. I know, if you will, the soul, the heart of everybody that's involved. So I think I stand up here with some sort of, let's just say, leg to stand on, if you will, because of the fact of my relationship. And the IID, in their writings, in their documentation, they also state that they're not a for-profit agency, and the history proves that. And that's one of the things that a lot of these people that are trying to take advantage of this dissolution of this agreement, let's just say, are leaning on what... You're not charging enough. You're not charging the people enough. I mean, even the city manager of Indio recently mentioned, having met with the Coachella Valley Water District. I don't know, I haven't seen it on the minutes or anything like that. I might have missed that meeting. Of course I did, because I'm relatively new to some of your most recent meetings.
Mr. Luna?
I'm sorry.
He's planning to make a presentation in open session at our next meeting.
I'm sorry.
The city manager of Indio is planning, is on the agenda for our next meeting.
Oh, good. And will that be here or in Palm Desert? Okay, thank you. Either way, just to kind of get a little bit of, let's just say, background here, the city manager of Indio has already, says, mentioned meeting with the Coachella Valley Water District, discussion was, past tense, potentially an overall increase in rates for Coachella Valley. Now, whether he's talking about increasing Coachella Valley Water District, increasing IID rates, I know the city of Indio is already charging a 1.05 something percent use fee for per hundred or thousand kilowatt. Am I right, am I wrong? Are you kind of like...
No, 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 I was just mentioning the time.
Oh.
Your comments.
All right, okay.
So if you would like to write, if you could write, write that.
Okay, I thank you so much. Either way, what I, my bottom line is that even with just a sort of an imprimatur of some other activity on the outside, it still increases rates, and we would be a part of it. And I think that it's a bigger picture than just what we might see immediately. And so, I encourage the board to really give it some deep thought and do a lot of research into some of these things, into how the economic, how it would impact our Coachella Valley residents, users, et cetera.
Thank you.
On the long term. Thank you so much.
And just for...
My apologies for...
Yeah, to clarify, as I understand it, the city of Indio is considering adding something to the rate for IID energy customers in the city of Indio.
They already are. I've got the bills to prove it.
Yeah, so you're a resident of the city of Indio?
My son, I have family in Indio, and...
So that's the scope of their effort, is within their city limits?
So you put a 1% here and a 1% there, and, you know, it starts going up and up, and there goes Jarvis again out the window.
Right, there you go. All right, thank you for your comments.
And I'll just ask, Mr. President, we do have a couple attendees on Zoom, so if there's any members of the public that would like to provide a comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time, or you can do star six to end it yourself. Okay, I don't see any at this time.
Thank you. So apparently, we have no further public comment at this time, based on what we're seeing. Moving on to special presentations and recognitions, we have two anniversaries and a retirement, I believe.
That's it.
Matt is here, and we'll do that last, but just to mention, we have a 20-year anniversary, Todd Inoki, electrical crew chief, and then a retirement, Armando Pacheco, mechanical technician, too, with 20 years. So thank you to both of them, and congratulations. We also have an anniversary with Matt Lautenheiser, auto shop supervisor, 20 years. Matt began his career with CBWD in 2002 as an auto shop technician. He came with an impressive background, having owned his own transmission repair shop for several years. Over the next 12 years, Matt was the go-to technician, and in 2014 was promoted to a maintenance and training technician, where he shared his knowledge with his peers and developed training programs such as the forklift and air brake courses that were utilized to train employees outside of the auto shop. In 2016, Matt was promoted to crew chief, and in 2017 promoted to his current position as the auto shop supervisor. Matt leads by example, and the changes he's made have resulted in more streamlined process for vehicle and equipment repairs. Matt has earned the respect of not only those in the auto shop, but has developed an incredibly positive working relationship throughout the district. Matt's leadership has resulted in a loyal and dedicated team committed to providing the absolute best service and ensure safe and reliable vehicles and equipment. Matt and his wife Heather have two children. His daughter Faith is starting her sophomore year at Grand Canyon University in Phoenix, and his son Hayden is a senior in high school and plays on the high-level club hockey team. I'm assuming that's ice hockey.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. All right, and so, congratulations, coming up, 20-year anniversary, and we'll have a little photo.
I don't know, but whoever I did, I need to pay them.
We did this before. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You.
And then after the photo, you get to have a little speech.
One, two, three, one, 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 two, three.
Over to you. Got any remarks you want to make? Yeah, I got a couple. Should I sit down? No, I, 22 years ago, I owned a transmission shop, and I was working 12, 14 hours a day, and my wife came to me and said she was pregnant, was going to be our daughter, and I thought, well, there's no way I'm going to be able to, you know, be part of my kid's life, working 12 to 14 hours a day, you know, and what am I going to miss? And I had some friends that worked here at the Water District and did some work for some people at the Water District, and they told me how great it was. So, over a period of a year, five applications and three interviews later, I applied for everything except the auto shop, because I didn't want to be a mechanic anymore. And lo and behold, I fell into the auto shop, and now 20 years later, I never missed a hockey game, I made it to all the volleyball games, I had vacations with the family in places I didn't think I'd be able to go, and it's all due to, you know, working here and getting busy. So I extend my appreciation to the board for giving us almost everything we want, not quite everything, but you give us...
That's my fault.
We give you what we need. And any success I've had, I mean, Dan and Stu are a great management team, but, I mean, honestly, everything that I get done is due to the outstanding crew that I got. They're a high-level set of technicians, and they make it easy to look good, so anyway. Thank you.
We really appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did they get him any ice time in the arena?
Actually, he's wanting to work and start making some money, so I think that the hockey might be coming to an end. That's okay.
On to item six, which is our consent calendar. We have a number of items there. Item six A through M as in Mary.
I'd like to pull six K.
K, which is the local SEQA.
Mr. President, I'll move the balance of the consent agenda.
All second.
Okay, good. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. Go ahead, so we're on K. So you don't have to go into all of it. It's pretty lengthy. I just was curious, to me, I'm thinking that SEQA is, there's a set of rules, okay? And that everybody abides by the same set of rules. Right, okay? And it seems like we have our own different tweaks to that, and is that normal?
I'd say, yeah, it is normal. We do abide by all the same rules. We're not changing any of the rules. In 2019, we did a comprehensive update for the first time since the 80s. We've stayed with BB&amp;K's Program 5 since that time, and every year, they update our local SEQA guidelines on an annual basis to reflect the changes that have occurred at the state level and also at the local level. Only thing we really do different that, you know, is specific to CBWD, is provide clarification and examples that we've gleaned on from the previous year. Interpretations of a project that is exempt, or exemptions that have come from the Water Code or Sigma, things like that. There's just minor additions, but in general...
It just seems like there's language in there that's specific to the way we want to conduct ourselves with the SEQA process. So I didn't know why we weren't following a standard procedure. It seems like there's, you know, this is, was, was written just for CBWD, but apparently it's written by the lawyers who write this for all of the water districts.
Yeah, the intent is to clarify how SEQA may apply to your district. There's the state SEQA guidelines, and then there's the guidelines within SEQA that says all agencies must adopt their own.
Right.
Local SEQA guidelines, and that helps to interpret the generalized rules for SEQA for each agency.
Right. Okay.
And so, our program is, we spread the cost among 200 public agency clients of updating and recommending what needs to be done on an annual basis, if anything needs to be updated, for your own local SEQA guidelines. So we're not going through chapter and verse of each water district's local SEQA guidelines. We're going through and seeing what laws have been changed that would require you to change certain parts of your local SEQA guidelines, but that's done on a firm way basis.
How do you guys know what we need, our local SEQA guidelines?
What you need for your local SEQA, we have a colleague who works with Ms. Patterson in terms of what needs to be done or changed, but we have a general structure for water districts that say, this law's changed for Sigma, for water districts that needs to be included, or not. But we don't do housing changes and housing codes and include that in your law.
Does CBWD have input on these changes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We go through about a four or five-month process to develop these guidelines.
Okay, okay, so you've got, so staff has gone through this to make sure that it'll... Okay. Okay. So then, once we approve it, does the state then look at it and say yes or no?
No, this is, once you do your local SEQA guidelines, once you implement them, if things have to be sent to the state, the state clearinghouse, a notice of exemption or a negative declaration, that's what gets approved at the state level.
You're right.
But if you didn't have local SEQA guidelines, then they would tell you.
The guidelines themselves are ours, then, so we're...
As long as we have them and then implement them, and then at that point, the state would be involved in any particular SEQA action.
No, I know. I mean, this is such a complicated thing. So you have 22 attachments to this, to this thing. You almost ran it out of...
There's a lot of language changes in it. So the majority of the attachments are optional for CBWD, just so you know.
So these are just a subset of the ones that we could have? Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
So we're not reinventing the wheel for the different forms. We want to make sure you have the forms every year through a portal that we send to staff. So if something needs to be changed because of the law, or something that's tailored to the district, we work with staff to do that. But we're not regenerating all those new guidelines, but...
Right, so then when our staff or consultant is preparing a SEQA document for submission, they use our guideline?
Correct. And we've provided a portal where all that is available for them to call up.
So I would just like to point out that I did raise a question on the guidelines in a separate email when this came out, specifically regarding a provision that talked about SEQA approval and who had the authority to approve SEQA documents, and it suggested that there were other organizations or other agencies that could do that, and I wondered why.
Yeah.
And it was explained to me, and I think, and Jeff, thank you for the explanation, so I appreciate that, and I think I'm good.
Okay.
So we're trying to be, in compliance with the law, cost-effective, but yet tailor it where needed for the district in working with your staff.
Fair enough. Good. And we do this every year, I mean, we've seen this before.
Correct.
So I guess if we get complaints from, then we'll know that there's something in here. Well, if something, yeah, we submit a SEQA document, and it doesn't...
You mean a complaint from the public, or...
Yeah, a complaint from, that it's difficult to comply with. I mean, I don't know if there's...
Yeah, we're not adding procedures.
It seems like we're adding procedures.
Well, we're not.
It seems like it, when you read it, that we're adding more procedures to it.
Oh, now we're...
But I'm not an expert on SEQA. I'm not an expert on SEQA, I just...
We're not adding any steps. We may be tailoring things to what the district's done in the past.
Good.
What may be lost here is that each year legislators adopt new rules for SEQA, and that is what's triggering this action. We have to add, we have to make changes to comply, like an exemption for a needle-syringe giveaway services. The state adopted a rule that you don't need to comply with SEQA for those needle exchange programs. So we had to change our local guidelines to include that exemption. An exemption for when you build restoration habitat projects, you no longer, you have an exemption now for SEQA. That's a new rule, so we're updating our guidance to include it. And every year, there's constant changes, so that's why you're likely to see us each year with a change to our guidelines.
Thank you. Good explanation from both of you. Appreciate it. Yes, good. Is there a motion to approve six K?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? I want to make sure, I want to make sure Director Nelson's still with us, but you don't have to second it, just let us know you're there.
I'm with you, Jim.
All right, I'll second it then. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
That passed for all. Sure?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan.
We have three items on the action calendar, I believe.
Yes.
The first eight A is task order four. Looks like David Wilson's coming up for the quarry connection to our nonpotable. This is Colorado River Water.
Yes.
Hi, David.
The purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number four, with Krieger and Stewart Incorporated.
Turn the mic to my con, please.
Apologies, I'll start over. So red is on.
Yes.
Purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number four with Krieger and Stewart Incorporated, in the amount of $80,900 to develop a feasibility study for providing Colorado River Water to the Quarry Country Club. The total cost of this request, which includes $15,000 for project management and engineering, and $10,000 for contingency, is $105,900. The purpose of the project is to ascertain the means for providing Colorado River Water from Lake Huaia to the quarry, develop a cost-benefit analysis that will inform a go-no-go decision on whether it's beneficial to develop a project in the name of our INLU Recharge Program. The total cost of this, again, is $105,900. It is budgeted in the East Valley Replenishment Fund in the amount of $150,000, therefore there was no adverse impact to the budget. And with that, I will take any questions.
So if we do go forward, we think the cost of this project's around two and a half million?
That's 2.4.
2.4, yeah.
What's the overall projection of water use from this project?
I'm sorry.
The overall projection of water use, I think you said?
They take about 3,500 GPM per day, which equates to, forgive me...
It's got to be eight or 900 acre feet, right?
Yeah, it's about 900 acre feet a year.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Director Nelson, was that your question about how much water use did we expect from the quarry?
That was it, thank you, Jim.
I just wonder, I mean, do we really have a hurdle? How do we know if the cost-benefit is a go or a no-go? What's the hurdle, you know, the hurdle rate or the, I mean, if, so if it costs more than X, we're not going to do it, and if it costs less, we will? I mean, what's that number?
Well, I think that's the scope, is to figure out what that number should be. I mean, the issue for this is, A, it involves installing a pump station at Lake Huaia. It also involves traversing through the city and through the country club's streets, which is relatively normal. Their consumption, again, is 3,500 gallons per minute over a span of five hours, which is significant, and so the goal of the project would be to figure out if there's a happy medium in terms of, you know, spreading out that delivery over time, minimizing the cost of the pump station use. And then, this is effectively at the edge of the aquifer, and so the question remains as to whether the benefit in the name of INLU recharge is there as it relates to the cost.
Right, and I'm not aware of our district having any policy that might say INLU recharge is better or worse than direct recharge. say In-Lu recharge is better or worse than direct recharge? Do we have anything like that? I mean, I, I mean, personally, I think that In-Lu's better, but, you know, it's more, it seems like a more, uh, a, a less invasive way to do the, get the job done, you know? Cause you're not going in and out.
No, sir, I, I'm not aware of a policy that we currently have.
Well, well, one, the district is, is getting money for, 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 for the water, and the other one, the, the district is paying to put the... Well, we're paying for the initial, but then they would, they would buy the water after that. Well, you have a customer. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a customer either way, cause either they're pumping water and paying the east rack, or, which, which in turn pays the canal fund for the water, uh, or, um, they're gonna pay the non-potable, which eventually is gonna pay the canal fund also. But there's, but there's maintenance in the, in the recharge. Now, there's, there's a lot of maintenance at, at, um... No, no, I, I, I mean, I think In-Lu, you have this upfront cost, but, but we, so we don't have, we haven't really valued one over the other, is what I, I, my point. You know, I mean, these are things that, I don't know if that's in the scope either, but, um, you know, I've never heard us doing a cost-benefit analysis of one of these projects. We just kinda do the projects.
Correct.
We take the next one in line and we go.
Correct.
And now we're looking at it. I'm just wondering, what are the parameters? I mean, what, when does it fail? What, you know, and I guess that's in the scope, but isn't that really for us to decide? I mean, so if you take two and a half million dollars for the project and, and it's nine hundred acre feet, that's twenty-seven hundred dollars an acre foot, one-time cost, right? Cause you're gonna save that nine hundred every year, uh, a- as far as converting from one source to the other. And, and so the question is, does that make sense? I mean, I, I don't know that we've ever really done a modeling of it to decide what the number is, you know?
We have not, and, and we've not done return...
I'm sorry, we have not, and we have not done return on investment, and we have not prioritized, um, based on cost basis. The guidance, uh, to staff has been, um, get people off of groundwater, use the Colorado River water, use the recycled water, um, wherever we can, regardless of cost. The idea was to protect the aquifer.
Yeah, I understand. So, so why are we considering this? It seems like a whole new direction. Why are we doing it?
Yeah, well, this is, this is the last one, if you will, that's, that's on the East, East Valley. Everything else has been on the valley floor, uh, and it seems intuitive that that would be an immediate benefit to the aquifer. It's kinda low-hanging fruit in terms of, instead of building a recharge facility, albeit we have the, the Levee, which this is, uh, upstream of, of the Levee, so this, this area, correct me if I'm wrong, it does not benefit from replenishment, um, on the Levee side. But again, it's also on the fringe.
Well, if, if it's with, if it's within the area of benefit, it must benefit from the Levee. They're paying, they're paying the rack, right?
Yes.
So, so we're gonna strike that contract?
Yeah, my, yes.
It's a mistake, yeah.
Poorly stated, but, but, yeah.
By the way, if they're not, then they shouldn't be paying the rack.
You're right.
And I'm sure that if they're listening, they would probably have that same concern.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, so that's, um, that's essentially it. This, this golf club, uh, has some stringent requirements to deliver water. Uh, it's, it's, it's not something we've done before, put a pump station at the, at Lake Kaweah. Uh, there is the operational component, um, the potential for putting, or what we're proposing to put it is right near where we deliver to the one-twenty through forty-five. And so, it's just, it was just slightly different, and we thought the, the, uh, best approach would be to develop a feasibility study and look at the cost benefit, and see if it is worth spending the dollars in this particular project to develop it.
It's potentially, uh, I guess it's possible that this study would come back and say, no, it's not feasible. It seems pretty remote.
It's not, it's not gonna happen. How is that gonna happen? So, they're gonna say twenty-seven hundred doesn't make sense? I mean, based on what?
Well, based on the delivery and the cost.
Yeah, but we've done other ones, and I'm sure have been way above that. No?
Not in the East Valley that I can think of.
I don't know. I don't have that information. It just seems, maybe if we had that information... We have our estimates, right? And they're probably gonna use our estimates. They're gonna use their actual production, which we should have available to us. I don't think we know that number. That's fine. It's, it's better than, than them coming and saying it's approved and it's on with the, the whole project.
Well, I think the intent here also is just to be prudent with, with the expenditures.
Well, if we don't do a feasibility study, the question then is, do we proceed with the project?
Right.
So, if we don't do a feasibility study, I would have to guess that we are not moving forward with the project.
So, are they gonna look at our cost estimate and decide if it's wrong or change it?
Well, they're gonna look at the, the means for delivery water and whether our cost estimate makes sense in terms of how we, we've figured out an alignment to take it there. We're gonna look at the delivery to the golf, to the golf club, their consumption, and how we can best, you know, um, minimize the burden, uh, on the district in terms of the size of the pump station and the size of the pipe.
Are they gonna, they're gonna meet with the people at, at the quarry?
Oh, yeah, for sure. That's part of the scope.
And that's part of the feasibility.
We would go over the operational parameters, area of operation.
I don't know. It sounds like stuff we probably do anyways, if they do it or we do it. I'm just trying to understand why we're changing how we do things. An extra hundred and five grand. So, if we said no to this, we would just, probably just go forward with the project?
I would probably say no.
Because...
Cause the board's not interested in looking at the costs.
But we, it's sort of laid out the costs, we already kinda have an idea of what it is. So, we're concerned that our estimates are not accurate?
Well, we did put out an RFP that included design, uh, for the project, and we could expand on that.
And we have in the past had the board ask us, what kind of analysis have you done on whether or not this makes sense?
No, I get that, and we've, I've seen, there's a chart somewhere, I've seen a couple of projects laid out, and this is the cost breaker foot.
Mm-hmm.
But, but, and sometimes, you know, it's converting sources, sometimes it's actually saving water. Um, hi, Carrie.
Hi, um, so, I just wanted to add, okay, when we asked for proposals for this project, we asked for them to, um, break it into like two phases, and the first one was this preliminary feasibility study, um, kinda the cost-benefit analysis, and then the second one is design. So, um, if we were to just go with the whole thing and just say, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna design it, and we're not gonna worry about the costs, um, we would still spend this hundred and five thousand plus a little extra for the design. Um, the reason we scoped it that way is so that we can still use this consultant if we decide we wanna move forward with the design.
Yeah.
But, I guess, to, more to your point, though, of why are we changing things? I'm not sure that we're really changing things too much. It's, this, this is one of the, um, more expensive or a little more challenging connections that we've had in the East Valley. Um, typically, they don't include pump stations, and they don't include a long length of pipe, and, so, we just wanted to make sure that we reviewed that information first before we just dive into design. Um, the other non-potable water projects that we've done have been mostly from Warp Ten or Warp Seven, uh, most Warp Ten, really, where it's a blend. It's recycled water and Colorado River water. So, we do have cost per acre foot for all of those types of projects. And so, what we could do is compare it.
But we've also done some recent connections in the East Valley, with our Madison Club. I mean, we did, we did all that stuff real, near the L4 pump station, that hooked up, I think, a couple courses and...
Right.
Mountain Course and those kinda things.
Right, that was, that was, um, not, I don't think directly to, I mean, that wa, that was a little of a system improvement, because that involved installing a lot of...
Right, that one was big.
Distribution pipelines and...
But, but, so say, let's say Madison Club, that was maybe the last one we did?
Right, and that was just mostly a, a meter and a vault in the telemetry.
So, it was a lot cheaper.
And, and there wasn't a pump station involved.
Okay, fair enough. No, and, and you, you kinda addressed my concern too, cause I had a feeling we're gonna do this anyways. So, so let's do it, and then we can always...
Right, and then we can, we, we...
Get a better sense of whether we should proceed or not, yeah.
Yeah, we can decide, is it in the range of what the Warp Ten, Warp Seven connections cost, and then we can just move on with design, and, but we would bring that back to you before we move to design.
Of course, of course. All right. Yeah, if you could include a little bit of data on other projects...
Yeah, right.
Just to get a sense of where it fits and...
Exactly.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm all right with it. It's good, good...
Is that a motion?
Uh, I'll move approval of eight A.
He's trying to move us along.
Uh, is there a second? Second?
I'll, I'll second, John, and then, uh, the question that I, well, I guess, the direction that I have would be that, uh, we, we get a report as to kind of a comparative analysis of what the, uh, costs are, uh, comparing the, the recharge, um, you know, kinda methodology, where you just, you know, percolate it into the ground and they pull it out versus, you know, a project like this that would have some ongoing costs. I, I, I guess that, that would be my, my hope for the project.
Did you guys understand? Can I just say something? Don't we have our own IT guys? Don't we have a slew of IT guys? Can't we get somebody in here to, 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 to fix this place? I mean, can't be that... Peter, Peter, just so you know, we have quite a bit of reverb on here. We have to hire a company to come in and fix it, or can we just fix the...
Yeah, I, I can't even hear Anthony. I, I don't know what's going on.
So, part of the problem...
Oh, his mic, his mic was off. No, he's, he's just venting a little, he's just venting a little on the reverb, but y- your, your last few words did not have a reverb, so maybe keep doing that. And if you could repeat the question, that would be helpful.
The question is, uh, I'm hoping that this project has a comparative analysis of the thought that you brought up, uh, John, was that, is it a better methodology to just put it in the ground at, right, right here at this site, or to, you know, pump it out of Lake Kaweah? Uh, you know, it, it oughta have a comparative analysis of the two methodologies right now.
I don't think we can put it into the ground without pumping it out of Lake Kaweah. I don't, I'm, so I'm, I'm not sure what we're comparing.
You're comparing the existing situation where they're paying the rack versus this project that they're, uh, that now we're gonna pump it, and what the costs are to the district and what the costs are to the customer.
Okay. Yeah, and kinda getting back to the earlier, is it better to do In-Lu? And I guess, for this specific project, is it better just to deliver the water to Levee and let them use their wells, or to do what this project proposes, which is to pr- s- provide surface water to them?
Yes, that would be a part of the feasibility study.
So, they'll be looking at that?
Yes.
So, the alternative, or the, the no-project alternative is just keep recharging it?
That's correct.
And keep using the well?
And the cost associated.
Fair enough. And I think, I heard a second from...
Yes.
Couple people. You got that?
No.
All right. Are we ready to vote? I think we are. Um, and then, uh, roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
So, B is, uh, is these, uh, two hydro pneumatic tank replacements, three tanks.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning. Here to request authorization to go out to bid for three hydro pneumatic tanks. And so, uh, one is in Bombay Beach, two are in Ranch Mirage, and by way of background, we have about one hundred sixty tanks in our system. Uh, these tanks range in age from forty-two years old to about sixty years old. And over time, uh, just like our water tanks, how they're susceptible to corrosion when the coatings fail. So, in our CIP budget, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars annually to start, uh, re- rehabbing these tanks and actually replacing them. So, today, this is to go out to bid for three of the tanks. If the project costs exceed what the board's comfortable approving, we would delete one of the tanks to stay within that two hundred thousand dollar budget. But again, this is something that we feel is very important. Uh, these are pressurized vessels, they do provide some storage, uh, for our hydro pneumatic, uh, systems out there, and so, we feel it's very important to do ongoing, uh, replacement of these tanks. It'll take us a while to get through all the one hundred sixty tanks. Uh, we have replaced four of them in the past, so this is just a continuation of that project.
Can you just explain a little faster exactly? I mean, I have an idea of what they do, but...
Sure. Uh, really good question. So, uh, these tanks are filled partially with air and with water. So, for hydro pneumatic systems, it means we don't have a, a tank on a hill. So, these tanks are pressurized, and they push out water when someone turns on their kitchen faucet or flush their toilet. And so, the pressures in these tanks, you know, can range about a hundred PSI, plus or minus, and so, this keeps our pumps from always having to run all the time, because there is some storage for our hydro pneumatic systems. So, they're really integral part of, uh, our system. In some cases, we've had to valve these tanks off, just because of their age and corrosion. So, what ends up happening is our pumps run all the time, all the time, because there is no storage here.
So, that, so the wells fill up, the pressure tanks, the hydraulic tanks, and then the water comes out of there, and then the well fills up those when it hits a certain level? They all run all the time in essence, right?
Yes, in general, and so, the tanks can be filled up by a booster station, for example, down, down the road, miles away. So, yes, and, and most of these systems are, are located up in higher areas, where we can't put a tank up on a hill or far away in remote areas.
So, the drinking water system is pressurized, right? And sanitation is just gravity. So, if we don't have a reservoir up on a hill that provides that constant head pressure, these are able to supplement that pressure in certain parts of the distribution system, so that we don't have to keep running pumps. These can also provide that, that head pressure.
So, we use our boosters to create the pressure in...
Correct.
...hydro pneumatic tanks?
Yes. So, the pumps turn off, this is pressurized, it provides water pressure, and then when somebody turns on their tap, it, it won't...
Bleeds off some of their pressure.
It'll bleed off some of it, but probably not enough that you'd need to recharge it. Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. I don't remember replacing these since I've been here.
Uh, we replaced...
We've got a lot of ta, we've got a lot of big tanks.
Yeah, we've, we've only, uh, done one phase, and so, that was, boy, probably five, six years ago, I think.
Okay. And what do you do with the old ones when you get rid of them?
Uh, scrap them. Most of them are, are corroded.
Cut them up?
Uh, yes, and, and they're salvage value that the contractor can make a lot of...
Sorry, I just wanted to make the point, too, we have, we have these at every well site, because they also assist with water hammer. So, if, um, uh, a well shuts off suddenly, or a valve closes suddenly, it, um, it absorbs that water hammer that could potentially be there. So, we do have an active, um, hydro pneumatic tank replacement program. We, we only get about a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars annually in the budget, but this was a strategic initiative, um, from our last strategic planning, um, a few years ago.
To do two hundred thousand dollars a year, is the...
Um, to, to, um, to, to, yeah, to make sure that we're staying up on this replacement program. Yeah, and, and then that, the two hundred thousand dollars seems to be what the budget, um, will afford.
Okay, good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Also move...
Motion from Director Nelson? Is there a second? Second. Um, roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then our final, uh, action item is this, uh, construction contract for the Adam Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Yes. Good morning again. So on August 23rd, staff received board authorization to go out to bid for this project. And so, uh, this is about 14,000 feet of pipe that we would replace with 24-inch Dr. Lawrenceian coated pipe with polyethylene encasement. The reason why we want to replace this pipeline is, uh, almost five years ago, it, it failed catastrophically. And as you.
You sure you want to replace it?
I'm positive. And so we know corrosion's an ongoing issue. Um, I spoke about this a few months ago. I can go into more detail if you'd like.
No. This is the same area, Talavera area where the corrosive soils.
Correct.
I, I move approval.
Can I, a second, but can I ask a question, Dan?
Sure.
Um, I think I've, I think I've stated in the past that I'd like to see the breakdown on the subcontractors, uh, to see, and I know, I know that we're reaching out and trying to do this, but it would help me to see who are small businesses and minority owned and women owned.
So that is included as part of the board action item? As, as part of the attachments?
It is, okay. I missed it, thank you. So I, I seconded the item.
Yeah, so that, and that is, is that on the, uh, that last, is that, oh, shoot. Is that the last attachment?
Yeah.
It should, it should look like.
Must be a period.
This.
DBE.
It's got three of them listed there.
Correct.
There, no, I'm sorry, there's three.
It's got the, so for the jack and board, the pipe abandonment and the paving.
Right.
DBE certification, no, no, no.
Chino, Arieta, Highland. So they're, so they are not, what does DBE stand for?
Business Enterprise.
Yeah, they're not DBEs.
No.
So there is a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed for him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Please, Dan.
I don't see any.
Do you not have any?
There aren't any. Uh, we do have a presentation on GeoTab. Stuart, is that you? Who's doing this?
Both.
Dan?
I'm gonna start and then he's gonna say the important stuff.
So do people like it? That's what I want to know.
I think Dan likes it.
Do people like it? I mean, I'm talking about not, not you.
I kept trying to the end.
I mean, I think it's good for the district.
I want a teaser.
Just curious. The whole man, the whole nanny thing. All right, let, let's go ahead and do your presentation.
Cliffhanger. Yeah, it's a cliffhanger. Um, yeah, so we just want to give you a brief update on the, the GeoTab implementation. Um, obviously that includes the, uh, geo, uh, positioning devices, the tracking mechanism, the camera, the predictive coach, which is gonna be our progressive disciplinary process as far as helping teach them and guide them to change behavior, um, as well as the lifesaver app, uh, which is blanking of the screen so they can't use their district, uh, devices while the vehicle is in motion. So first of all, the board approved this, uh, implementation, uh, at the November 9th board meeting last year. Uh, we completed the installation on 434 vehicles, um, in March, thanks to the auto shop. It was a, a large task in addition to the, uh, normal work that they do. And we actually went live in mid, mid-April. Uh, so we've been in operation about six months overall. Um, we are still in a Phase 1B where we're still pilot testing the predictive coach. Uh, we're working on some, um, disciplinary, uh, matrices and other things in, in order to, uh, release a predictive coach on, on what the parameters are and the tolerances. And we are also, uh, we just went to the Citrix cloud with most of our devices, uh, in September. So we are pilot testing for the, the predictive coach within 140 vehicles and we're testing the lifesaver app in about 20 applications, partially phones and partially, uh, iPads. So that's in process. We hope to go live with those two as a 1B launch, uh, in the next four to six weeks. So we have three goals of this project, in my opinion. The first one is obviously we're continuously evolving and increasing operational optimization. The second one is we're mitigating risk, uh, safety risk and trying to change behavior and some of the driver, uh, operational tasks, daily tasks. And I, kind of a interesting horizontal bar chart, but if you look at it, um, we can show on a daily basis, um, with more than 250 vehicles in operation, driving on average 12,500 miles a day, that we're at a 99.87% over the last seven weeks of a safety scorecard and still go into detail, but that's fantastic. And as we move along, we are changing behaviors and we can prove it with the data that we have, meaning we have 100, 100% scorecards, six days of the last 30 where there were no driving issues whatsoever with, with over 12,000 miles driven in that day, which I think is fantastic. Um, the other thing I would say is on the, on the right, um, we have a speed, uh, chart. We monitor this daily. The first thing I do when I would get to work, uh, and a few other people, we look at this to see what the exceptions are. But if you look, our old system only had a GPS and a speed every 120 seconds and now we have it every second. So we can monitor every vehicle at all times. Uh, we used to get six or more, um, excessive speeds in a, in a week of 80 miles plus and we don't typically get anything above 78. And we are working in a process that if somebody does get 78 now, we monitor that and we send an email and we use that to change the behavior to try to continue to slow them down. But without question, we can prove that they slowed down significantly and they are driving more safely. Uh, we have a dashboard. These are just two or three things that we have on the dashboard, but there's probably 30 of them. Um, uh, we have total fleet miles, that is in a month. Um, so we're, we're driving 60,000 miles a week and we're averaging 99.87% on a safety scorecard with five different parameters, uh, that still go into detail on. But I think that's extremely well done. I think we travel on average 2.8 million miles a year and using, using data is power and using this data to change the behavior, I think, uh, is extremely important and I think that it's going very well. The chart, bar chart on the right shows how many miles or how many vehicles we have driving various, uh, cumulative miles for the month. Uh, so we have 63 vehicles traveling more than 1,000 miles, uh, a month. Uh, several of them, like the Zanharos, travel on average 3,000 miles a month. Um, and it also provides us the ability to look at idle time, fleet, uh, uh, costs as far as, uh, cost per mile based on debt service. We have the ability to look at the 92 vehicles that drive under 100 miles a month and, you know, now that we're hopefully getting close to post pandemic, um, you know, to look at what we were talking about as far as having a kiosk where we get rid of some of these vehicles that are driving 20 miles a month and we amalgamate them into a kiosk whereby we just have more fleet vehicles and over time, um, these people that are driving it, you know, sparingly can just go grab a vehicle, kind of like a, like an enterprise, I guess, or something of the sort.
Dan, when you do that?
Yes.
Is there a locator to know who's driving?
Yeah, so.
So that when you get the 80 mile an hour report, they'll, they'll be the one that gets tagged.
We have a fob, so every driver has their own identifier and it doesn't matter what vehicle they get in, as soon as you start the vehicle, it beeps and you gotta take the fob and scan it so that we know at all times who's in the vehicle. Um, and over and above our existing system, and again, it's not completely launched, we get anybody, we set a parameter right now at 80 miles an hour. Anybody that does that, uh, the three administrators automatically get an, an email within 60 seconds of them doing 80 miles an hour.
Wow.
Yeah, so it, it is tenfold better than the system that we had and I do, you know, it isn't to, you know, the intent is not to punish the employee. The intent is to slow them down and change their behaviors and most importantly, get our insurance back and, and get us in a safer spot. And I can definitely say that we've seen significant, uh, changes in our, uh, in our operational culture, uh, in the last six months. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Stu and then he'll turn it back to me on some of the vehicle policy, but he'll just go into some of the details on what GeoTab offers.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, so as Dan was talking about the dashboard and some of the data that is available, um, I wanted to maybe walk you down the path of what, uh, the more granular details would look like in the system a, as we go through. Uh, so this is the, the next tab in the GeoTab platform where you would, uh, go to the map. Uh, if this were a live map, you could zoom in closer and closer. You'll notice that there's the vehicle clusters, um, that are throughout the map. As you zoom in, those clusters disappear and they become individual vehicles and you can see what the activities of those vehicles are. Um, you'll note that there are different shapes, uh, the squares where there are vehicles with, uh, no driver name, such as right here. Uh, those would be vehicles that are parked, they're not, uh, in any kind of a trip or mo, operational mode at that time. Then you'll note the ones that have a driver name, that's what you were referencing, do we know who's in a vehicle? Uh, each employee has a driver identification fob, there's an RFID reader inside the vehicle and you simply scan into it and it then identifies you with that particular vehicle. Uh, and then there's the vehicles that have the triangular shape to them, those are actually in motion or actively on a trip, uh, and then they point in the direction that that vehicle is going. And as you scan in closer on the screen, you'll actually see the vehicles actively moving. It turns into an ant farm almost, uh, if you're looking at all the vehicles. Uh, and on that note, uh, the, the, um, administrators can see all of the district vehicles. Um, so there's three administrators, it's Dan Charlton, Scott Hunter and myself. Uh, and then the rest of the system is set up, uh, based on the organizational, uh, structure of the district. So as an example, uh, the stormwater crew chief cannot look over to the sanitation, uh, crew chief information and their crews, they really manage their own business structure, uh, and keeps them focused on, on their areas of responsibility. Um, so that's a, a benefit to keep people focused on, on what's important. Uh, then we go to the driver's safety scorecard that Dan was referencing is on the dashboard. This is emailed on a daily basis. Again, this one shows the administrator level, so the 249 vehicles that were on the road for this particular day. It shows the overall score of 99.1% and this is an older one, uh, and we picked this one for a, a particular purpose. We can drill down deeper into the scorecard and it will show the driver, uh, with the highest risk and in this case it was me.
Well done.
And this was done, uh, purposefully to show what the exceptions looked like, what the trips would look like, uh, what people would see in the system, uh, done by a professional, so don't worry about that. It also shows the total number of miles for the day, it shows the total number of exceptions, which are the, the rule, uh, outside the rule parameters. And I just want to point out, you'll notice this was in early June and there were 30 fleet occurrences for that one day. Uh, the past two months, I don't know that we hit 30 exceptions per a month. And so that's, goes to the point that Dan was making, that there's some really significant improvements in driver behavior. And it was asked if people liked the system. I think there was some apprehension at the very beginning. Uh, I think that there have been, uh, things that happened, and I'll show you in a, in a couple of slides, uh, where it has really benefited the employees and, and shown that, um, they were not at fault for, for actions on the road, which are hugely beneficial.
John, do you have a question?
Oh, no, I don't. Well, I was, I was gonna say, so this is telling us you had a hard acceleration, is that correct?
Right, and so I'll show you, yeah, I'll show you an example of that. So, so what we do is we look at this report every morning and then what we would do is we would say, okay, this driver had these, uh, particular exceptions in their route. So then we can pull that route up, the specific route in the system that shows where I drove. So in this case, I left Coachella and on number one and I drove down 52, up Grapefruit, around, and I just did a loop. And you'll see where the route changes, that's where an exception occurs, if it's a long enough period of time for the system to recognize it as it's zoomed out. If you zoomed in, you'll see that there's other exceptions that are throughout that route. There were different ones. This one was a seatbelt, I took it off just to show what would show in the system. And then if, if it's a short period of time, two or three seconds, then it just shows up as the triangles throughout that route. But you can click on those on a live map and then it'll take you directly to that. Anytime there's an exception generated in the system, it saves a short video clip. Uh, and so that's what we're gonna show you here is that, um, let's see if I can make this work. Is there a mouse?
No.
Uh, so if we could play the video, um, this is the harsh cornering, uh, and the reason we picked this example is that, oh, thank you. Uh, so I'll play the video and you'll see that, let me pause it here for a second. So it shows on the video, it shows the date, uh, stamp, the timestamp, shows the GPS coordinates and then it shows the speed of the vehicle. So you can look at the system and look at the overall, uh, event and see if there is a reason why this event occurred. In this case, you'll see that the corner shows it's a 25 mile an hour corner, uh, doing 40 miles an hour and I'll carry on. And then I simply let off the gas and let it roll around the corner and it probably just scrubbed off enough speed to get down to the 35 miles an hour. So that would be an event where you would say the driver needs to probably have some counseling and say that you need to watch the speed and the signs and the.
I have a question. How, how quickly is the feedback given to the employee? I mean, with same accountability.
So generally it's the next, so if the, if the exception report comes in that morning, the crew chiefs and supervisors are talking to the employees the same, that, that very next day. So the, these events would have happened the day before on the report and they come in and they review that information and then, uh, have the discussions with the employees. So it's pretty, pretty much real time. And I just want to point out one other thing, so we can go back here just a little bit of, maybe I'll do it this way. So there's other, um, benefits to reviewing these videos, so I'm just, well, I wanted to stop it there. It showed, uh, can I back that up?
Click back on those. Go back to where you were. No, hold on, she's gonna pull it up for you.
Okay. So just on that harsh cornering event where you saw me just letting it roll around the corner, there was a vehicle coming the other direction, that particular corner, people cut that corner often. And so when we review the, the video, it also helps us determine whether the, the driver was simply making an evasive maneuver, so they could get a harsh cornering or harsh braking, simply avoiding some kind of an incident. And that would be one where you simply reinforce the good driving behavior, being aware of their situation, you know, the situational awareness, you know, paying attention to what's going on, not assuming drivers are always gonna make the right decision. Uh, we've had drivers that had to slam on their brakes because somebody turned on a red light. Um, so it gives us that information that also supports our drivers and, and helps us to, you know, reinforce that good behavior. We have one final video and benefit that we want to show you, uh, based on the surf site, uh, video cameras, which is that whenever a vehicle is in motion on an active trip, it is recording that information. It doesn't necessarily, um, create any exceptions, but in this case, our, our driver was going up 74 and he was driving along, uh, see he's only doing 32 miles an hour, he's trying to get up to speed, it's an older truck. And you'll notice that, uh, you'll see off to the left here that, uh, there's a vehicle comes in.
Oh.
And that vehicle makes some contact with our truck and keeps driving. Um, so our driver's now trying to find a space to pull off, but I want to show you.
Accelerate.
Accelerate, good. That we can take this data and we can get right to it and start going frame by frame.
Exactly.
And there's the side of the car getting torn off, but we could read the license plate and share that information, uh, with risk management and they were able to, uh, go and recover, uh, for damages to our vehicle. There were actually two hit and runs on that same day. Uh, both events, we were able to go back and capture the video from the camera and, uh, get the license plate number on both vehicles. Um, so it is benefiting, uh, the employees, it's, is providing protection for them to, that they're, you know, telling the true stories and, uh, that they're making the right decisions. Um, obviously it also will show if there's mistakes that are made and we can use those to coach the employees, uh, into more awareness and safer driving practices. Uh, and it's working, I think, quite well, as Dan mentioned, that our overall safety score being at almost 99.9% for, uh, 12,000 miles per day is, is pretty remarkable. Uh, the RMJ and GeoTab, uh, employees that I talk to consistently as we've been implementing this are, are stunned. Frankly, the, uh, organization of our size that has had this of a, uh, remarkable of a, of a result in implementation, they're, they're very impressed and use us as examples to other organizations.
That is impressive. So, um, the purpose of this, I mean, really was, or at least the justification for financing it, was, uh, that it's gonna save us money on our automobile insurance. And, I mean, what is our loss ratio reflecting, we're self-insured right now, right?
Correct. We'll move on. We are, thank you, Stuart.
This is on there, I haven't looked at it.
Well, I guess for me, we're self-insured now. We heard the board very clearly, we're trying to change a culture and now we have the data to be able to provide to insurance companies. So the goal is implement the predictive coaching, implement the Lifesaver app, which we had to wait for the Citrix and IS has done a great job bringing that forward. So implement that before year end. And then in the March timeframe, when we have these 100% or other, I don't know why that went blank, 100% or other safety scorecards, to be able to use the daily scorecards and to prove to the insurance company that we've got significantly safer and we have the data to provide that we are in a different world now. And our, my goal is that in the budget for fiscal year '24, that we actually can get our insurance back. That's what we're trying to accomplish, that's one of the main goals. And again, you know, employees are in parking lots and calling us and saying, hey, a car just hit me in the parking lot. And they're not even moving. And we, it does protect the employee, it protects the company, it provides additional data and tools to be able to do that. So I think it's a huge win overall. I think with any implementation, their change management's difficult, so employees were a little hesitant. I've heard much less concern from employees in the last two to three months, that they're getting on board. So just to finish up, we did implementation in November, we took the Vehicle Accident and Incident Prevention Policy along with the Geotab procurement. We had every employee take training and they signed a piece of paper acknowledging the safety concerns and the Geotab implementation. We've realigned expectations and I think we can very clearly use the data to show that we've realigned and we're starting to change the culture significantly. We have, we had a committee in place to be able to develop the Vehicle Accident and Incident Prevention Policy, which is Scott Hunter, myself, Scott Byrd and the rest of my management team. And I think it's been very successful. I think these management tools help us to, you know, to change the culture. And then lastly, we set up a weekly accident review panel. Scott Hunter and I are not in the room. It's set up with, if there's an accident or incident in a specific group, we have the union leader there that represents that group, we have Chris Chaffins who takes the lead on it, and we have two or three of my management team in a different branch of Operation Management sit in on that. And they determine if it was preventable or not and then we adjust accordingly and move on. So I think that has been very successful as well, because it has, you know, it has a full cross-section of our staff to assess whether it was preventable or not. And again, we're just trying to change the dial. So I think it's been effective. To answer your question, I don't know if they're happy, but I'm happy and I think we're gonna get our insurance back.
Yeah, and I don't know that I heard you answer this. Have we measured, is our rate of claims down from what it was?
So, you know, it's a fine line. We are, we monitor that on, you know, our risk management department, HR manages the accident versus incident. So, you know, it's a fine line. Are accidents down? I would say yes. Are incidents down? I think the reportability on our incidents has increased because we've, our expectation, we've moved the goalposts, you need to notify us of almost everything and do an incident report. So I'd say small incidents might be up a touch, but large accidents are down definitely over time. And again, we're gonna try to compile all this data and manage the data and put it in a fashion that two potential insurance providers that I think will show that, as his point is, for a company of this size to be at 99.87%, that we have truly changed the culture. That's the intent.
Yeah, no, it's, it's impressive. Is there any discussion or plan to do rear-facing cameras?
Yes, there has been discussion.
There has been discussion, baby steps, I would say. I do think that, you know, first of all, it's hard to get any vehicle right now from any manufacturer, Ford, Chevy, whatever, whoever it may be, we're struggling with that. To even get into a manufacturing queue is difficult, but as we move forward, I think that is very strategic. We have a few with back-facing cameras, but I do think overall, it's gonna help the employee and the company to do that. It's just at this point in time, we're begging for a lot, just to get into manufacturing.
And my, the point of that, I mean, you could see more things, but one of the things you can see, I'm not necessarily advocating it, we haven't done this in my own, because it seems like almost too much, but too much nanny, you know? But you can see if people's eyes are on the road or if they're texting. And I think texting and being distracted by your phone is probably the big new thing in causing incidents and accidents.
And the pilot testing we're doing for the Lifesaver app, when it's in motion, a CBWD phone, the screen is blank, they can't text and they can't look at their email.
Yeah, but everyone has two phones.
Their personal phones, we can't, we can't control their personal phones. But to your point, we just had an incident last week where somebody pulled up to the gate, a new employee, and the gate actually opened this way. So he just went to miss the gate and he went to back up four feet, there was a car right behind him that he couldn't see. So that's a perfect example that in the future, I think that's a smart thing to do, especially, I think as we move forward, it'll become cheaper and more standard on vehicles, the rear-facing cameras.
I have one question, will you go back to the map?
Which one, this one, that one?
Yeah. So on the south side of the sea, you see the cluster of nine or 10 vehicles. Do we have a yard there?
Yeah, we have a yard there, West Shores. We have a group there, like domestic is very compartmentalized.
We don't have anything over there.
Oh, yeah, we have lots of pipelines in that, in that Salt City area. We have, I think, 3,000 customers or more.
No, 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 but I mean, that seems quite, that, this seems far away from desert shores, isn't it?
No. This here is West Shores, we have a full facility there and we have people that show up there, they don't even show up to the office, there's a whole group. And again, they're not compartmentalized into, I do this, they do everything down in that area to create operational optimization. I think there's eight people, a crew chief and seven people on the crew. And they do everything in that area.
But our service doesn't go past desert shores, right?
It's in Salt City.
Yeah, Salt City, it's, that's Salt City, you can just see underneath it, it's Salt City. We have a lot of pipe, a lot of old pipe from 60s and 70s, some of it ACP, they do a heck of a job down there.
So our well that feeds that goes that far?
We, we got rid of some of it. We have a new...
We had, we had three wells at Avenue 86, sorry, county line.
Right, but that, and that's a long way, though.
And it was a, I don't know, 14-mile pipeline or something.
14-mile pipeline.
But we've recently taken those wells offline because we've connected them to the Avenue's Highway 86 Transmission Main. So the water that Salt City is getting now comes from either Middleton Road, where the K-312 school is, or further north along Airport Boulevard.
Yeah, we had three wells and we shut those off as soon as we commissioned the transmission.
Just curious, because I wasn't, wasn't familiar with that area where CBWD had...
Yeah, we actually...
We have a couple of reservoirs and booster stations and a whole series of pipes that need to be replaced.
And obviously, the canal goes, the canal goes 110 miles south to the, on the other side.
That's where we had that meeting where they were daring us to drink the water, which we did. I did, I drank it, I was perfectly fine. Still alive.
With that, we just wanted to give you an update, I think it's going well, we're gonna implement the FASB in the next four to six weeks, so we're very pleased thus far. And I wanted to thank you guys for providing this, the procurement of the materials. And I want to thank, you know, my team, Scott Hunter's team, Matt, Stu, Chad, for helping move this forward. I think it's been a success, so that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan and Stuart. Yeah, good, good, good. So this gets us to Board General comments. Why don't we start with Director Nelson?
John, let me know if you continue to get the feedback. I think that I hear a repeat or an echo, which may be the problem.
You sound good, actually.
Okay, great. Hey, so, no, I don't have many comments except for the fact that, hey, we did get our first storm through the Rockies. Utah got 19 inches of snow and there's a couple more, may hit a little bit north of our Colorado River watershed, but it's great to see.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter.
I'm good, John.
Okay. I don't know if this, and I don't know if I want to make it an agenda item, but I just wanted to know, when are we gonna finish the landscaping here in Coachella, where we put the wall up? Are we going to, we have plans for that? To landscape it? Okay.
Yeah, we've done some subtle landscaping, but we're continuing to work on the area up front and we're gonna continue on that. We're trying to make it minimal. We're letting it grow.
We're letting it grow?
We have planted some trees in the...
Okay. But I mean, between where the, where the road is and the wall is, we're gonna put some landscaping so it looks better than it does now, which is like, just blank, plain.
Well, at one point, the city council at Coachella was interested in painting a mural on that wall. But I haven't heard anything from them at all since that initial conversation. You know, I was concerned that as soon as they did something on the wall, it'd get tagged. And they said, oh, no, no, they don't, they don't tag murals out here. I said, all right, well, it's a different kind of experience, but, you know, we'll see. They were supposed to select someone and basically cover the cost. This, we got into this because of the Blue Water Tower that they also had an interest in. But eventually, we told them that, you know, it just wasn't gonna be feasible for us to relocate it somewhere else and it created a liability if it was left there that we would, of course, ask the city to handle if something were to happen. And of course, that made it very unattractive. But, you know, the mural on the wall just hasn't gone anywhere. So maybe after the election, we get some new people, or at least some people that feel a little more secure in their position, we can probe it again, but I haven't heard anything from them at all.
Sure. Yeah, we will never do it again. You saw, you saw the vandalism that was done and the fire that was created, it cost us a lot of money. But we have planted some landscaping that will mature and once that gets further along, we will evaluate that process and then continue on once it matures a little bit. Just need a little time, thanks.
And following on that comment, I did drive by that Alamo tank up in, your tank.
Yeah.
There's a lot of landscaping up there.
We got our money's worth.
It looks pretty good. Accelerated, yeah, there's a little accelerated growth on some of that. Make it look mature at the beginning.
That was my tank.
That's your tank.
Did you ever tag that?
There's a lot of plants. I don't know if you've been by, but I was curious, so I went by. That's my only comment. So do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Why don't we get into the board meeting reports? The first four, we'll save for later. Director Estrada, and then, let's see, October 12th, Colorado River Board, Director Nelson?
Yeah, we met on October 12th, Wednesday. I was there, I chaired the meeting. A lot of just hydrology updates to that, as well as an executive session to discuss some of the alternative accounting measures that the other states are trying to propose on the California.
Thank you.
And we'll talk about that in a quick session.
Yeah. October 13th, Salt City Authority, Director Bianco?
We had a financial report, we had a follow-up discussion on Colorado River shortages and possibly impact in Salt City in the region. Biggest part of the year.
Yeah, good, thanks. Let's see, we had, on the 17th, you had a meeting regarding efficiency payments.
When the, when the, I guess, we had the bureaus, the bureaus, I had that letter, you know, staff had a meeting and I was part of that meeting to see going forward, what our plans, what our plans were. Going forward. What their, I wanted to know, I wanted to know staff's thoughts on what they thought, what we should do.
Okay. There was a DVBA board meeting on October 17th that I attended, it was pretty standard issue for that. October 18th, Director Aguilar and I were here for a meeting with the project proponents on Volvo Ranch Mirage. And we appreciate staff, working with them to help move that project forward at a more reasonable cost. I can tell you. Did you hear, you heard, did you hear what happened? Apparently, there was a stray one on the, it was supposed to be 531 and there was 1531? Yeah. But, you know, if we hadn't got together, they may never have figured that out. So, thank you. Director Aguilar, if you had anything else?
No, I'm good, John.
October 19th, there was a very popular speaker at the DVBA lunch. I noticed he's not even listed as present.
Yes.
So, so Colorado River Board Chair, Peter Nelson, presented and it was a packed house, let's put it that way. And it was really good, Peter. I mean, kind of, bit of an egghead Colorado River thing, but I really appreciated it and I think other people did also.
Yeah, I'm a real egghead, John, and it's actually what the request was, is to give kind of a similar report that I did over at the Salt City Symposium a few months earlier. And so that was the report they requested, so that was the report I gave. But I thought it went over pretty well, I had some pretty good feedback from a number of people and appreciated the eggheadiness of it. But, you know, really describing the hydrology and some of the actions that the river community has taken on the river and then what some of the challenges will be coming up. So, thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you. 24th?
So I think I'm next. I was not able to attend California Farm Water Coalition meetings.
Okay. And then the next one is Director Estrada. So are there any other meetings that we need to report on?
Yes, sir, a couple. On the 17th, there was a seven Basin states Santa Fe follow-up with the seven states discussing what the next discussion topics would be, kind of a follow-up on their evaporation challenges to the system. That was, so seven Basin states on October 17th. Then on October 20th and 21st, we got together, seven Basin states, USBR and Department of Interior, Steve Abbott and I attended that meeting to discuss some of the similar issues, trying to identify actions to be taken in 2023, speaking with the Bureau on a little more clarity on what the funding opportunities would be under the recently rolled-out Infrastructure Reduction Act money that's available. Again, talking about some of the evaporative losses in the lower basin. And so that was on the October 20th and 21st. That's it.
Thank you. Any others? Is there a motion to approve the meetings reported, per diem, for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Please, second, whatever. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass 4-0. General Manager report?
Yes, sir. I can report that we have made an offer that was accepted by our candidate for Director Finance position, who will be reporting to us on November 7th. And just recently, we had the executive, a new Executive Assistant report to us this, yesterday. Julia Brier from College of the Desert. So she'll be working with Sylvia in Palm Desert. As far as COVID goes, we've got two qualifying cases, so two folks off work right now, six qualifying cases for the month of October. Six qualifying cases for the month of October, and 453 people have shown documented proof of vaccination status. So, uh, that's, uh, that's a pretty good number. Um, we did recently see there was a news article that talked about, um, the required, the Biden administration requirement to vaccinate, uh, federal contractors. Uh, although the courts have ruled that is only applicable in the states that have, uh, filed those lawsuits, the Biden administration has basically told everybody else to stay the course. We'll be waiting to see whether any of the federal agencies actually incorporate language, but at this point, I am highly doubtful that that particular initiative will move forward. Uh, and do, I do not expect to continue to mandate our folks get vaccinated, uh, until we get directed otherwise. And that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Council report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, AB 2142, uh, was adopted, which deals with the tax exemption from gross income for anyone who receives a TURF rebate. It's a big accomplishment there. And then two other bills, AB 2647 and SB 100, 1100, uh, deal with other nuances to the Brown Act that if and when they become available or need to be used, uh, we'll certainly work with the board for that. But trying to expedite and make Brown Act posting agendas and procedures, uh, more flexible. That's all I have.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, any departmental reports today?
Yes, sir. I don't see anybody jumping up.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items on the agenda as amended earlier in the meeting, and we will reconvene, uh, in open session to report out of closed session, uh, following that. Is hereby reconvened. We have no reportable actions from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.